Well, good evening, everyone. We want to welcome you to June 10th, 2019 Regular School Board Meeting. I want to call this meeting to order. We do have a quorum. However, we are going to have, we have a couple that are absent. Ms. Phelps will be joining us if we, if the board votes to include at, after the recess. So we'll bring up a motion at that point. And Ms., Dr. Meyer is in Brazil. He's absent. He's with his, he's with his mother-in-law. And they're assisting there. And Ms. Gramps is not with us this evening as she is going through bereavement as well with her, the loss of her father. On behalf of the board, I would like to extend our condolences to our fellow board member, Ms. Gramps, and their entire family for the loss of her father. We will continue to provide you with all the support that we can, can offer and also lift to your family in our prayers. We have before us the agenda. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion approved.
Moved by Mr. Twig to approve the agenda and seconded by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries four zero. We're going to move on to 3.01 Personnel Matters in a Closed Meeting. Let it be resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Chair will now entertain a motion to enter closed session.
Motion closed.
Motion by Mr. Twig to enter closed session, seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, we are now in closed session. The Chair now entertain a motion to re-enter open session.
I make a motion to re-enter open session.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Shelley, seconded by Mr. Twig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, we are now in open session. Certification of the closed meeting. Whereas Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, and considered, or considered in the meeting. We'll now entertain a motion to certify the closed meeting. Moved by Mr. Blaine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. We'll have a roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Braswell, aye. Motion carries four zero. Items from the closed meeting, Ms. Bowler.
That the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, the request to rescind the resignation.
Ms. Bowler, Ms. Bowler, there you go. Thank you.
That the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, the request to rescind the resignation, resignations, and retirements as presented and discussed in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, Ms. Bowler. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Moved by Ms. Shelley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Twig. We'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are, the time is now 5:54. We will enter into recess until 6:30. And to resume our, our regular scheduled school board meeting, we are right now at We're going to ask Ms. Shelley to lead us in the pledge. If the Assembly could please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have a few housekeeping issues that we need to address. Ms. Phelps is requested to be, to participate in tonight's school board meeting. She's in a, from a remote location. She and her family are vacationing in Myrtle Beach. So we would like to entertain a motion to include her in the meeting this evening. Can the Chair now entertain a motion to invite Ms. Phelps into the meeting?
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Twig, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Hearing none, the motion carries four zero. Ms. Phelps is now invited into the meeting. We'll get her on the phone.
Your call cannot be completed.
Hello? Ms. Phelps, this is Renee Daniels. We're joining you into the school board meeting. Are you ready?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Phelps. We have present with us.
Hello.
Can you hear me, Ms. Phelps?
Yes.
Okay. We have present with us Ms. Shelley, Mr. Twig, and Mr. Blaine and myself. And you're the fifth member that is present here to this evening. Ms. Gramps is home on bereavement. She just lost her, her father. And Mr., Dr. Meyer is in Brazil with his mother-in-law, who is going through, has medical issues that he's helping to contend with. So, welcome to the meeting. We are at 7.02, if you will, just right after the pledge. We are going to continue the meeting. First, I'd like to have the Assembly join me in a moment of silence. We have a, a member, Mr., I mean, Pat Gray of the Maintenance Department, passed away on the 17th of April. He worked for the School Division for 21 years. He always had a smile and a happy thought to share with others. So if the Assembly could please join me in a moment of silence in honor of Mr. Gray for his dedication of service to the School Division. Thank you. We'd also like to, to the Assembly to join me in a moment of silence, as with much sadness that we lost one of our students, Kyra Suzuna, who recently passed away. He's going to be greatly missed, and our thoughts and prayers are with his family at this time of great sorrow. If we could join me in a moment of silence for Kyra Suzuna. Thank you. We're going to move on to 8.01. There's no public hearing, and so we'll go to 9.01, Approval of the Consent Agenda. 9.01, 9.02, 9.03, 9.04, 9.05, and 9.06. So we have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will so move.
Moved by Mr. Blaine, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. So it's been properly moved. And second, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Well, from now on, when we do our votes, because everyone has to hear Ms. Phelps's vote, we will do it by roll call vote. So I'll start with Ms. Phelps. Ms. Phelps.
Aye.
Ms. Phelps votes aye. Mr. Blaine?
Aye.
Mr. Twig?
Aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. The motion carries five zero. Moving on, we have in our agenda informational items there for your information and perusal. We'll move on to 11.01. There's no instructional highlights or performing arts highlights. So let's move on to 12.01. Bus driver, 50 years of service recognition, Mr. Uppercow.
Thank the Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker. It gives us great pleasure to share that Virginia Moss has celebrated 50 years of dedicated service as a Spotsylvania County School Bus Driver. Tonight, we'd like to take a few moments to highlight her career. And at this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Moss to come on up, as she's doing. That's why you're such a good bus driver, because you can anticipate everything. And also ask Mr. Kenny Forrest, our Transportation, to come up as well. Thank you, Mr. Forrest. Fifty years ago, Virginia Moss began her occupation as a Spotsylvania School Bus Driver when her youngest child started school. Mr. Raymond Chenault hired, trained, and was her first supervisor. During those times, within the county's Transportation Department, there was no designated bus driver trainers. Mr. Chenault's colleague, Mrs. Leach, requested his assistance with the recruitment of bus drivers who would also be willing to work within the Spotsylvania High School cafeteria. Now, you're multi-talented. Mr. Chenault didn't stop after employing Virginia as a bus driver. He then offered her a second job as part-time cafeteria worker. She accepted without hesitation. Her days then consisted of a morning bus route, serving lunches, and an afternoon route to return the children home from school. Virginia served as a Spotsylvania High School cafeteria staff member for 39 years. So that in its own right deserves, I think, a lot of recognition. But she was just getting started. Virginia has driven for 50 years and has enjoyed, enjoyed every moment. Believe it or not, her favorite age group to drive is high school. Throughout her career, she has had four supervisors within the last 50 years. Two other bus drivers that she recalls starting shortly after her as bus driver colleagues include Sally Wright and Pat Wheeler. She has countless memories, countless memorable moments, I should say, during the years of her driving. Most recently, while out to dinner at a local restaurant, she knows the young lady watching her. That could be scary. The young lady then approached her and asked, "Are you Mrs. Moss, my former bus driver?" Virginia then replied that she was. The young lady then went on to share how much she meant to her, Mrs. Moss meant to the young lady, and enjoyed having her as her bus driver. This former student then paid for Virginia's meal as appreciation for her years of service at her, as her bus driver. Over the last 50 years, Virginia's most frightening moment of driving was during a tornado warning that required her to go into the school and anchor down with the children. She has driven up to three generations in some families. The one thing that she loves most about her job is the children. She may not have birthed them biologically, but they are her children. In the most recent years, Virginia was given the opportunity to accompany her daughter-in-law, Diane Moss, who's also here this evening, also a bus driver, and she's an activity bus driver, and Ms. Moss became, for a moment at least, an activity bus aide. She enjoyed her time working with Diane, but quickly discovered one thing that she disliked most about being an aide: the bumpy ride. When Virginia's not driving the school bus, she enjoys spending time with her husband of 62 years, Stanley Moss. Mr. Moss, I'm going to have you stand up just for a minute here. And of course, their family. You know, behind every good woman, there's a good man, they say. I think it might be back. She's the mother of six children, 10 grandchildren, and 15 great-grandchildren. Virginia is an avid Golden State Warrior fan. Her favorite player of all time is Steph Curry. You better get home and pray a little bit, because they need some help. She's a dedicated fan who spends countless hours watching their games and cheering them on, game after game. The daily time spent with the children going to and from school has generated lifelong memories that she continues to cherish. Throughout her 50 years of being a bus driver, she remains passionate about what she does and continues to enjoy this journey. As the saying goes, "Choose a job that you love, and you will never have to work a day in your life." Virginia continues to do just that. Thank you, ma'am.
Moving on to 12.02, Girls Go Cyber Smart Competition.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Girls Go Cyber is a fun and interactive series of digital challenges designed to introduce girls to the fields of cybersecurity. There are three separate competitions. This year, we are excited to share that Spotsylvania High School had the highest combined registration and levels across Virginia with 108 participants. As the first-place winner for the state, Spotsylvania High School received $1,000 in an Amazon Gift Card Award. The national competition took place June 4th through the 6th. This evening, we are recognized the following students who have been key to the competition from the start, with recruiting girls for the first competition, and who also competed in the national championship round. So at this time, I'd like to call to the, the front Samantha Arando, Aradondo, sorry. We have Rachel Detor. We have Elizabeth Lamorada. We have Amelia Smith. We have Erica Willis. And not sure if these individuals are here, but I certainly want to recognize them, just in case. Lauren Kiesacker, Lauren, sorry. And Catherine Sale. And I know this person is here, a special thank you to their teacher-adviser, Kristy So what was just whispered in my ear for the national competition was that they finished 42nd out of 120 schools nationally.
One more, just to make sure.
And as the girls go back, if we have any family that is here that supports your child, if you could please stand so we could recognize you for your help with the Girls Go Cyber
And then moving on to 12.03, 2019 Board of Education Award Recipient.
Thank you. At this time, we would like Assistant Principal Vicky Pow and any staff from Chancellor Elementary to please come forward to be recognized. We are pleased to share that Chancellor Elementary has received the 2019 Board of Education Distinguished Achievement Award. Chancellor Elementary was one of 175 schools that met all state and federal benchmarks and made progress toward the goals of the Governor and the Board. Chancellor Elementary has consecutively received a Virginia Board of Education designation since 2008. Congratulations to the students and staff of Chancellor Elementary for your dedication and commitment to our students.
Well, I want to thank all of those that received awards and recognitions for their outstanding work, not only to their division, but for the students that we serve. I, Ms. Moss, I'm just so impressed. That's a lot of meals, 39 years, and a lot of miles. Meals and miles with Ms. Moss. Congratulations for your service to our division. I will go on a limb and say, not only do we appreciate your good work, but we love you too. And thank you for everything that you've done for Spotsylvania County Schools. We'll move on to 13.01, Public Comments. Ms. Bowler.
Mr. Chair, there is no one who has signed up to speak this evening?
No one has signed up to speak, so I will ask, is there anyone in the audience at this time that would like to address the board? Please raise your hand to be recognized. Someone snatched that little hand down. Is there, is there anyone in the Assembly that would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to 13.02, Board Member Comments. Let's start off to my far-right, Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. I am pulling my notes. So I just want to say, I hope everyone is in having a good summer. We, I guess we're into our third week of summer break already. I'm a bit jealous. I've been seeing people at the beach and all over the place and enjoying their, their summer, and it's awesome. And, and the weather has been wonderful, minus this past weekend, but I know we've had really good weather for everyone as well. So I hope everyone is enjoying their summer and staying safe. And then we've had graduations since our last meeting. Those all went well. I want to thank our Maintenance Department for all of the movement that they did, our Technology Department for, for setting up all of the live streaming. That went very well. And of course, our schools and our staff, our school staff and the students and the parents and everyone that made our graduation successful. And once again, congratulations to the class of 2019.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Mr. Twig.
I'd just like to provide a special congratulations to Ms. Moss for her impeccable service over many decades that reward that this school board and this community school system will be able to treasure for a long time to come. Certainly want to appreciate you. And for those that are coming shortly behind you in your footsteps, we thank you, those people in advance. Also, Dr. Mandy Hester's leaving us after three great years at Spotsie High. Wish you well, Dr. Hester, and you will be greatly missed. We've done a lot of positive things at Spotsie High over the last several years, a lot of progress, and so you'll leave a legacy for us to continue. And then certainly, our class of 2019, congratulations to all, all of them. Past tense, they're all moving on with their lives, but it was a fun year. It seemed like we did a whole lot of educating and a lot of accomplishments in that arena, statistically speaking as well. So let's have a rest up, rest up this summer and get ready for an exciting new endeavor this fall. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Twig. Mr. Blaine?
Last Wednesday and Thursday, we had a program made available to, by our administration for our staff, and it was exceptionally great. We had about 240 members of our staff there. This is many of them on vacation, and they came at their own expense and on their own time. And I think that says a whole lot about our faculty and our attitude toward education and what we do. The program was designed to help each of those teachers move ahead and become a better teacher. And I think that the fact that it was so well-attended tests to the high quality of administration that we have, and I'd like to thank you all for attending.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Phelps, would you like to address or make any comments?
Yes, I'd like to just make one quick, um, happy summary off, and that's it.
Okay. And thank you, Ms. Phelps. I also would just like to say, I enjoyed watching all of the graduations. It is a mark for what we're really all about. And every year, I am thrilled to see our young people matriculate from that phase of life to the next phase. It's what we're really all about. And I heard mentioned in Ms. Moss's presentation how she touched lives, and people remembered the good work that she did. And I am here to say that not, that not only happens with our, our bus drivers down at the lowest level, where they're having personal contact with our children, but every employee, whether you have a direct touch or indirect touch, your work is valuable to the product that we are preparing so they can go out and compete in a, in a world that is a lot different than what we remembered as, as kids. And so, thank you for your work. Thank you for your, your concern. Thank you for your love. And thank you, most of all, for your touch over our children's lives. I tell people all the time, my, my son, when he came here, he was in second grade at Courthouse Road Elementary. He received a touch not only from his teachers, but from our HR Director, who was the Assistant Principal at the time, Ms. Michelle, or Doctor, Michelle Colbert. And now he's, went through and matriculated through high school, through college, and he's out making his own living in the world and making his own mark in the world so that at some point, he will also have an opportunity to make a great contribution back to the work that needs to be done in education. So I thank you all for your work. I thank you for your touch. And most of all, I just thank you for caring enough to help and be a part of these young people's lives. So thank you. We'll move on to- We'll move on to thirteen point zero three, Superintendent's Comments, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I will just echo that many of the comments that the Board has already made, I echo those sentiments, but I just wanted to also follow up on Ms. Moss's service and was, was a pleasure to be out there when she was also recognized among her peers at the, at the Transportation Luncheon that occurred a few weeks ago. I also had the opportunity, I believe, to ride along with her daughter earlier in the year, out in the Livingston area, and she has almost thirty years of experience as, as a bus driver, and I just want to thank them for their service, it means a great deal. And also echo the Leadership Learning Exchange and all of the work that staff did. I believe that we had over three hundred leaders and teachers that joined us over two days last week, the majority of folks that, that came, many of them off-contract, and so it was really a wonderful time, and we're, we're gearing up for the 2019, 2020 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. We'll move on to fourteen point zero one, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? Mr. Blaine.
First, briefly, we'd just like to tell you a little bit about our Commonwealth Governor's School. We have, this year, we had twenty-seven, twenty-seven graduates from the Spotsylvania High School site. All those students are going on to higher education, and Spotsylvania graduates were awarded two hundred and thirty-seven dollars, two hundred and thirty-seven, seven hundred and fifty dollars in scholarships, which is a, for which they deserve a compliment. Riverbend site has two thousand and nineteen graduates, number thirty-one, and all the students there as well are going on to, on to college. And Riverbend graduates were awarded one million, four hundred and forty-two, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars in scholarships, so I think they too deserve a real compliment and thanks for the record that they're, they're establishing. For coming year, we're going to have at Spotsylvania thirty-three students, and we have one new eleventh grader, and Riverbend will have thirty-one students with one new eleventh grader. So, that's our Commonwealth Governor's School. They do an outstanding job, and it's nice to be able to report about that. In addition, I'd like to tell you just a little bit about our Career and Tech Center. National Signing Day was held Wednesday, May eighth, for students enrolled in a career technic, career and technical pathway. Over twenty-eight students were recognized with their employers that day, and teacher for securing full-time employment in their CTE career area of choice. This is an opportunity, one of the training programs that we have, that graduates can graduate and go right into employment, and this is an outstanding accomplishment. We had twenty-eight students who were recognized that day for that purpose. On June tenth, that's today, is the kickoff of the Math Bridges Program. Students visited the Career, Career and Tech Center this morning and discovered math in career areas like air conditioning, masonry, culinary arts, dental assisting, computer systems, technology, and metal trades. And for the you folks listening, just think about your youngster who's a junior high school kid getting on into high school now, think about the kind of outcome that can happen in two or three years in these various trades that I've mentioned. We have two Skills USA National Competitors, Austin Seay and Kellum Azell, as they travel to Louisville, Kentucky, June twenty-fourth and twenty-eighth. They're going to be competing in their own national contests. And finally, the JROTC will attend the JROTC Cadet Leadership Challenge on June twenty-fifth to the thirtieth at Fort Pendleton, and we want to wish good luck to all the competitors. And that reports concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Shelley.
Um, thank you, Mr. Braswell. This is not a committee report, but I just wanted to let you there, but our Board members know that, Mr. Braswell, Dr. Baker, and I attended the Virginia School Board Association's Law Conference last week. We were able to get updates on new laws that are in Virginia that had passed our legislation, and then also updates on some special education law and some other laws that have come around the pike for schools. So, it's a, it's an amazing conference, gives us very good information so we can make sure that our division is running the way it needs to be running, and we are, but it, it's, it's always nice to hear it coming from the lawyers that we know we're doing it right. So, I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Ms. Phelps, did you have any Board Member comments? I mean, Board Member comments?
No, I don't.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the only comment I have is Cortland High School, everything is going according to plan in terms of the field and other construction projects. I'm really excited about the progress that we've made thus far, and I am looking forward to the very first football game of the year, because it's going to be a sight to behold. Come on out to Cortland High School and see some football being played on not only artificial turf, but blue turf, and I'm thrilled about it. I'm exhilarated about it. I'm excited about it. I can't, I can't contain myself. All right, you got it. Okay, so moving on to Superintendent Reports, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. As you know, the School Board had requested follow-up on two different informational items, some that have been discussed previously, and I'm going to invite first, Mr. Don Uppercow to come up and share some information regarding illegal school bus passing. And I also want to welcome Major Troy Skebo from the Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department, who will also be assisting in presenting this information, and our Director of Transportation, Kenny Forrest, and our Director of School Discipline and Student Safety, Mr. John Lynn.
Thank you, Chairman Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker. It is a pleasure tonight to follow up, give you a follow-up report on illegal school bus First, we'll go back in time a bit. The Virginia Department of Education created a survey tool, and the Transportation Department participated in voluntary annual surveys conducted by our bus drivers on designated dates. Those went from the year twenty-fourteen through twenty-seventeen. And what the drivers did was, they observed and reported illegal passing by vehicles when buses were stopped and utilizing their red lights and their stop arms. Getting old stinks, I can't see the buttons. As you can see, here are some results from the survey tool, and you can see by year that they vary somewhat, but there are quite a few, and this is on designated days that were predetermined by the Department of Education. In fact, they come out to almost an average of a hundred and forty and a half per day of survey. So, with that information, knowing that we had a good database, we decided to try to do something about it. So, in twenty-fourteen, the School Division, along with the Sheriff's Department, began a collaborative exploration of a stop-arm camera initiative. And in fact, on May the fourteenth, twenty-fifteen, our former Transportation Director, Transportation Supervisor, myself, and retired Major Don Thodas actually traveled to Prince George, Virginia for an onsite assessment of their program, and they were one of the first in the states to implement it. Later in twenty-fifteen, however, the stop-arm camera procedures were successfully challenged in the Virginia Supreme Court, which led to most of these efforts across Virginia to And although that law was amended in twenty-sixteen, legal challenges continued until this past January, January twenty-nineteen, when House Bill twenty-three forty-four was passed by the Virginia House, and a very similar bill was passed by the Virginia Senate unanimously. That passage required the DMV to release certain vehicle data to private vendors operating video monitoring system on school buses, and what that really did was, it helped resolve the former legal issues that stop-arm cameras seemed to bring up amongst some in the public. And now, there are, is a new interest in renewing the stop-arm camera initiatives in a number of different localities. So, how does the stop-arm camera system work? Cameras are affixed to the bus's stop arms, which come out or deployed when buses stop to pick up and deliver children. These cameras take pictures of the license plates of cars when they illegally pass the buses, and the pictures are then sent electronically to a vendor for pre-screening. Once they're pre-screened, a vendor then sends these to the Sheriff's Department, they send pictures of the offending vehicles to the Sheriff's Department for verification of the offense. It's very key, from a legal perspective, that each offense be verified by law enforcement before the offenders can be actually charged. An offending driver is sent a court summons via first-class mail that includes a picture of their license plate as the car legally, or excuse me, illegally passed the bus. The offending driver may pay a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine and waive appearance in civil court, or they may contest the offense and appear in court to defend. Typically, most vendors will actually install the stop-arm cameras on our school buses without upfront cost to the School Division, but they do that in exchange for a predetermined percentage of the fine. In addition, a local ordinance is required to authorize the School Division to operate a video monitoring system on stop-arm school buses, and that, after that occurs, a solicitation from the Division Purchasing Department is needed to select an appropriate vendor and to determine installation and revenue-sharing details. The key to this program, any program containing, or implementing a stop-arm camera system, is a strong, continued collaborative effort between the School Division and the Sheriff's Department. That is essential to instituting and maintaining enforcement efforts. So, I hope that gave you some information that you didn't have before, be more than welcome to answer any questions that you might have, or that Major Skebo or Mr. Forrest might be able to assist with.
Thank you, Mr. Uppercow. I want to ask first, Ms. Phelps, if she had any questions that needed, that she wanted to entertain.
Yeah, I do have a question. Do we know, or, Mr. Uppercow, do you, has the county attorney been looking at the, the process and the procedures as far as implementing the, the, I guess, the county code, the ordinance that would have to be written? I guess it would have to go through the county attorney?
It does, and then it would be passed by the, or approved by the Board of Supervisors.
So, do you know if the county attorney has that on his desk now?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
She said, "Does the county attorney have it on his desk now?"
He, he does not. He does not have it on his desk yet, and we're not at that point yet that we can present that to him. There are two major School Divisions that are just now exploring this issue that I'm aware of in the state of Virginia, one being Albemarle County, the other being Virginia Beach. I'm sure there are others that are also interested like we are in possibly exploring this as well.
So, is there a possibility to move forward, to have the Board of Supervisors and the county attorney start at least exploring our options of their next move?
Um, we're at the point now, we're, you know, we're kind of in the infancy, again, it's kind of been reborn, so we haven't had those opportunities to speak with the county attorney or even our School Board Attorney yet about this.
Uh, Ms. Phelps, did you have any other questions? Do we still have her? Can, can we check to make sure we still have Ms. Phelps on the phone? We may have lost her. Okay, we're gonna, Ms. Phelps, if you're listening, we're gonna try to get you reconnected, and we'll give you an opportunity to finish your question, and we'll have Mr. Twig. Go ahead.
No questions, thank you.
No, no questions. Mr. Blaine, did you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. So, um, I like the part where the vendor would possibly put the cameras on for free, and then do they say what percentage of that fee that they would require if they did it? Because if it's a two-hundred-dollar fee that would come to our county, did they say, you know, they want twenty-five dollars of it, or a hundred and fifty dollars of it?
You negotiate that during the RFP process. That's one of the things that you negotiate with them, what percentage do they get and whatnot. The money by law does go to the School Division, however, in Virginia Beach, for example, I can tell you that the Police Department does receive, I believe the School Division is going to pay for the man-hours required to oversee the actual verification process. So, there is a collaborative effort there, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but by law, the money typically is earmarked for the School Division.
I like that part, but I understand, we definitely would need to collaborate with our Sheriff's Department, and they are spending time. Also, this law doesn't go into effect until I won anyway, so we're, I'm glad to see that we're, we're working on it. So, the camera, this is, this is one of my concerns. So, let's say my son was driving my car, that's, that's registered to me, and he would never do this, but what if he ran past it and they took the camera? Would I get the ticket, or can the camera see who was driving the vehicle?
I think I can answer some of that. So, the, the summons is issued to the registered owner of the vehicle, and what the law says is prima facie evidence that you being the owner of the vehicle, being operated on the, on the street, that the summons be issued to that person. If the registered owner wanted to dispute that, they would come to court. As far as if the camera actually shows the driver, Mr. Uppercow, can you?
It typically doesn't, it shows a plate.
A plate from the rear, and it just depends on the setup of the vehicle.
Okay, but yet if you're letting somebody borrow your vehicle, then you're responsible.
This is almost similar to the, the red light camera violations that are...
Okay. Um, and then as, as Ms. Phelps was mentioning as well, with the ordinance, with our supervisors, I had spoken to my superv, one of the supervisors, and he said that they did have it, and they were looking at it, but I don't know how far it had gone with the supervisors, because this was a few weeks ago. And they did have it, and they had, they, I guess that's a, they had it. So, they have to do whatever their part is, and I guess they have to talk to the Sheriff's Department and lawyers, and so I appreciate all of you for bringing this information to us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. I want to go back to Ms. Phelps. Ms. Phelps, do you, can, can you finish your line of questioning?
Um, yeah, I, I do know that, um...
Hold on a second, Ms. Phelps, we gotta get the mic closer to the speaker.
I guess this would be a, a question for Mr. Uppercow.
Okay, good.
I, I do know, I think it was Richmond City Schools do have this school bus stop-arm cameras and the program set up down there, so I don't know if you did any, if any research was done to collaborate, to see how they, maybe they implemented it, or what the whole process?
I'm still not quite sure I got all that.
No, she, she was asking, she said that in Richmond, they have that process, and she, she wanted to know if there was some coordination with that School Division to determine how they implemented, and if we could benefit from that. Is that, I'm saying the essence of which, okay.
Yeah, not yet, there hasn't been.
Did you, he said not, not, pretty much, not yet.
Right.
So, I have another question. So, you had mentioned that the funding would come from the vendors... You had mentioned that the funding would come from the vendors. Do we already have the stop-arm cameras on the outside? I know we have cameras on the inside.
We only have cameras on the inside at present. About, I want to say, four years ago, before the issues came up with the Supreme Court challenge, we actually had about four buses that were installed as a pilot program with the stop-arm cameras. After the, after people kind of put the stop-arm initiative on hold for legal reasons, those were removed by the vendor. And in fact, that particular vendor was bought out by somebody else, and they no longer exist in their former capacity. But the cameras on the inside of the bus, on occasion, depending on how new they are, can sometimes assist in identifying cars now, even without the stop-arm cameras, when they do illegally pass a school bus. And drivers now, I don't want anybody to think that everybody's waiting for a stop-arm initiative in order to report illegal behavior. That's not true. Our drivers, as you know, all have two-way radios, and when they do find somebody zipping past them during a stop, they are able to get the license plate number and call those in to dispatch. And then dispatch contacts the sheriff's department. The problem is, in those cases, that you have to really, you correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you have to be able to corroborate the information, and a stop-arm camera would enable you to do that much better, because you have a clearer shot. You have a clear picture of the offender's license, and maybe you want to add to that?
No, that is correct. With the camera, in essence, that's the evidence. When you have complaints that are called in, you rely on the bus driver to provide the information. And of course, that's something that takes some time to investigate, make sure that the tags on the vehicle come back correctly and match the vehicle. And then, that person or the deputy would have to follow up with that violator, and then subpoena the bus driver to court. We have, the sheriff's office has been very aggressively enforcing some complaints that have been coming in from your bus drivers. More recently, the Four Mile Fork area in the Hotel District, we have had several complaints from bus drivers. So, I enacted a detail to go out there for, just to give you an example, on one of the days that we went out there for the three different schools, elementary, middle, and high, I think we were there a matter of two hours, maybe two and a half hours, and we summoned 10 people for violating that. And that's just one area of the county. And you know how many buses that you have on the street. So, this is a very serious problem, and the sheriff's office is very committed in working with the school to overcome this.
Ms. Phelps, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So, how many, the pilot program that was implemented was four buses in 2014?
I want to say 15, I think. I think it was 2015.
I guess the time to get at is, what was the, is there any information, important factual data that could show what the pilot program of the buses that were, I mean, the cameras on the outside of the buses? Would feedback that would give us as a board to look at?
I don't have that now. I know there were only four buses, and a lot of the initial work was actually done to make sure the quality control was such that you could, if you were to do that kind of thing across the board, that you would have good quality pictures and that kind of thing. At first, we spent more time on the technical aspects of making sure that you had a good product. We did not prosecute, you know, obviously, because there was no provision to do that. But I don't have any statistics to give you on those four buses.
Perfect. So, we don't have any buses right now that have cameras on the outside?
We don't have any with stop-arm cameras at this time, no.
Stop-arm, okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Skebo. I appreciate your time, and Mr. Upperco, and Mr. Forrest. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you for your presentation, and it was very informative. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell, do you mind if I ask one question?
Go ahead.
Just on, I think one thing that's an overriding theme that I'm hearing, and thank you, gentlemen, for your work with this over the years, and now that the law is going to be more favorable to moving forward, I appreciate, you know, the collaboration that we do have across the departments. But I think that what I'm, I think I've been hearing from the majority, if not all of the school board, is a desire to see us be able to move forward, now that the law is more favorable in being able to get a handle on these and to be able to move forward in addressing it and enforcing it legally. So, going back to an original question that maybe I heard differently, knowing that there's that desire to move forward from the board, and certainly myself, what are the steps moving forward that, on the school division side, we need to take, if any, knowing that there are steps that are beyond our control at the county level?
The first thing is to tell us to do it, which I think we're hearing. And then, the second thing, I believe, would be we would need to collaborate with Major Skebo and the sheriff's department about the next steps. One thing for sure is, we would want to invite several vendors to look at some of their products to begin with. I know there's been improvements, even in the last three or four years, in the technology. At some point after that, we would go ahead and we would put a RFP out on the street to see, you know, what kind of cost factors we were talking about and that kind of thing. But in addition, we'd also be needing to meet with a representative of the Board of Supervisors, I would think, and/or the county attorney, to make sure that we had an ordinance that was doable before we got too far into this and had to turn around and come out. I will tell you that a lot of work was done previously, and then, as I said, based on some of the issues with the problems with the law, it kind of just came to a stop. So, it's a similar process.
Thank you for that, and I'll be meeting with our county, Acting County Administrator, Mr. Ed Petrovich, and I will certainly, from my end, talk with him about what we might do together to begin moving forward on behalf of not only the school division, but probably both boards. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Shelley had one additional question. Go ahead, please.
I think you answered it, because I was going to ask about getting an RFP out there or getting, starting the work on it, but you mentioned that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation.
Thank you.
Dr. Baker, you can, do you have a...
Yes, thank you. And the second report is a follow-up on inquiries about middle school sports and what our current program looks like, and any potential expansion or adjustments to that moving forward. So, Mr. Keith Wolf, our Executive Director of Secondary Education.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker. So, this morning I have with me, yeah, this morning, this afternoon, or this evening I have with me Mr. Henry Thody, the A.D. from Battlefield Middle School, who's right here, as well as Sean Hockaday, our Director of School Maintenance, in case there are any questions that are specific to the presentation that you see this evening. So, if we could have that, thank you. So, at the request of the school board, there's been some questions in regards to the potential addition of sports as it relates to middle school baseball and field hockey. So, what I wanted to do is just provide you some different information this evening for your consideration as we move forward. So, the middle school athletic philosophy, as Spotsylvania County Public Middle Schools believe that athletics at the middle school level is an integral part of the total educational program. We believe that interscholastic athletics, when properly planned and implemented, are related to the goals of general education, relate to the student, the student body, and the community. So, for this evening, for the sports considerations, anytime you put a sport up for proposal, you have to consider Title IX. So, when considering the addition of a sport of an athletic program, and in order to comply with the requirements of Title IX, you must consider adding another sport of the opposite gender. In our review of the middle school program, and upon request of the school board, we are presenting the following sports for consideration: girls' field hockey and boys' Currently, on something that's not formatted very well, but the middle school athletic opportunities that currently exist for our female students in the fall, we currently have basketball and girls' soccer. In the winter, we have volleyball. In the spring, we have track and field and softball. For our males, in the fall, we have football. In the winter, basketball and wrestling. And in the spring, soccer, track and field. So, some of the information in regards to girls' field hockey is, what you see there is that when you consider the following factors and potential startup costs, is what I essentially want to go through, just so you have a good understanding of what potentially this might be. So, for field space, it is competitive. Most of our middle schools are, their field hockey field would be the same field as it would be for soccer or football. And in some of our high schools, we already know that their football field is essentially that they're either using your Chancellor Middle shares with Chancellor High, your Post Oak Middle shares with Spotsia High, and so on and so forth. So, you do have some competition with different fields there. The coaching stipend for personnel, of course, for the new year coming up, is 1560. So, for total personnel across the board of 10,920. And I omitted the startup equipment costs, essentially for girls' field hockey, comes out to roughly $79,000. The official costs, official costs currently are slated at $45 a game. There's a 5% booking fee that's not included in this figure, and a $30 travel fee. So, when you look at the projected total startup costs of a little over $100,000 to start up girls' field hockey at the middle school level, with recurring costs of coaching stipends, officials, and transportation costs, coming out to about $25,000 per year just for field hockey. So, the following slide for boys' baseball essentially breaks down a lot of the same information. Our field space is lacking, honestly. So, our field space, not all of the middle schools have baseball fields or access to a field. Battlefield Middle School used for softball in the spring. Chancellor Middle School softball only. They could use the high school, but they would need to coordinate times to go ahead and do that. Freedom Middle School does have a baseball field that's accessible. Ny River Middle has a softball field. Post Oak Middle School has softball only, and again, that they would have to do the same thing, is coordinate with the high school to go ahead and utilize their field. Spotsylvania Middle School has a baseball field, but the outfield overlaps with football and the soccer field. And Thornburg Middle School has a softball field only. Now, we did explore reaching out to Patriot Field and Loryella Park as the potential's an option for us to go ahead and use baseball, because of the wonderful facilities they have. However, our students would have to be off the field by 5:00 p.m. So, typically, our games at this point extend till 5:30. So, to get there for your warm-ups, to start a game at 4:00, and then to finish only within an hour, I don't know that that would be conducive, but it certainly is something to consider. Your stipends amounts are the same there, are the same there. Your startup equipment cost is just shy of $60,000. The official costs are $70 per game currently, with a $200 booking fee, and then $9 travel fee. So, and then your projected total startup costs are $83,000, close to $83,500, with recurring costs of approximately $25,000. If you incorporated those sports, you would need to, probably to best accommodate them, is just go ahead and shift some of the things that I had shown you from before. So, your female sports would be in the fall, you'd have field hockey and soccer. You'd actually split winter into two sports, so winter one and winter two, you'd have basketball. You'd move basketball from the fall to the winter, and then you'd have volleyball. And then in the spring, you would continue with track and field and softball. For the males, in the fall, you continue with football. In winter one, you would do basketball. So, whoever's home, the other team is away, so you could incorporate that. In winter two, instead of having wrestling at a separate time, then you have volleyball, those would run concurrently together. They use very different practicing spaces. And when it comes down to meet, again, you're just, or to a game, you're just flip-flopping schedules. So, and in the spring, you'd have soccer, track and field, and then, of course, you'd add your baseball. Potential challenges to consider obtaining coaches, but honestly, I think that you have a number of coaches who would be very passionate about field hockey. It's very popular in the area, as well as baseball. Scheduling of games, regular season versus tournament. Currently, games are played basically two times a week. So, a potential addition of that could be if you went on a Monday, Wednesday, and have a Friday schedule. On Fridays, field, middle school sports have not been played on Friday as long as I can remember, even back being a middle school principal. But that potential does exist through that discussion. Trainers at the middle school level, we have seen countless articles and countless news about students who have achieved any type of injury, but definitely concussion protocols that we do worry about. And then, activity directors at the middle school level currently, if you are an activity director or an athletic director at the middle school level, you don't get a block off to go ahead and do that. You have your instructional block that you try to get some things done, or it's done during your lunch. That's if, for example, I know that some of our teachers, our special education teachers who are different, are pooled at various times. So, it does become a little bit of a challenge to sort of think about. Not a barrier, just a consideration. So, all of this aside, I honestly feel that if you build it, they will come. So, our next steps are ongoing discussions along with the board, and then review options during our next budget process, so that we can continue with any types of consideration that the board may want to consider. And at this point, I'd be very happy to go ahead and answer any questions that you may have. And as I shared at the beginning, I do have Henry Thody, who's the Battlefield Middle School Athletic Director, and Sean Hockaday here for any specific questions as they may relate to the athletic season or to the field space. That's a very...
Mr. Wolf, thank you very much for your presentation. I want to start with Mr. Blaine. Did you have any questions, Mr. Blaine?
Yeah. How enthusiastic are you about implementing this program?
How enthusiastic am I? I think it's, I think there's always an opportunity for our kids, and the more you get them involved, the studies show that the better that they do inside of school. I think baseball's always been an opportunity that we should pursue inside of the school division, and field hockey as well, because of the success of our programs across the board. I would definitely like to see these incorporated at some point, but I also do respect that there's a budget impact to this, at the same time with recurring costs that are associated with it.
One other question is, is there a group of students right now who are not particularly interested in sports activities that you feel would be attracted to some of the things you've discussed?
I would say, and I'm sure Mr. Thody could, would verify, or he may share his thoughts. I think you have students right now that we are losing to either Travel Bar or Parks and Rec, who would potentially support school spirit along the way if we had those teams being able, I would rather have them, have them with us and provide them the opportunity, as I'm sure that these gentlemen would say the same thing.
I think that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Ms. Phelps, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So, Keith, did I understand, are you working with the Parks and Rec also, or were you just looking at our fields that are the softball fields, the smaller fields?
No, we did, Ms. Phelps, look at, have a discussion with Parks and Rec. Actually, I asked, you know, Mr. Upperco if he would do me a favor and reach out. He was having a conversation outside of that, and I said, you know, could you see about the potential of utilizing their space? Because Patriot Park is an absolutely beautiful opportunity, and we know that Loryella is close for some of our teams as well. We, the only real concern that exists there is coming off the fields for 5:00, because they have Parks and Rec, that they have to get the fields ready for the teams, or for the games or practice for that evening. So, it really does, it would be more of a utopian environment, if you will, if we could have that back at the home school, where the students have access to the field, and that we didn't have to short-change a game by, you know, essentially a half hour or so, so that Parks and Rec could fire up in the evening.
So, the softball fields are smaller than the baseball fields, and have we looked at making, extending our school fields that we already have? I mean, would that be increase in cost? Extending, making it all dirt field, and then maybe putting some, expanding it for baseball, and then when they have softball, just putting in some kind of post-in to bring in the field smaller?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Phelps, at the high school level, all high schools have a game field and a practice field. So, those schools, middle schools that are joining or near the high school, the middle schools could actually use the practice field as their game field initially. There's a couple of different options of how we could move into this. All of the, all schools have a location there on their site, and a joining school, such as Battlefield. Battlefield Middle does not have a baseball field, but there's an area behind Battlefield Middle that could be turned into a baseball field for the middle school. So, there's a lot of different options. There's a lot of different ways we could go about this, and if it was implemented, we would only maybe have one or two schools affected in the very... would only maybe have one or two schools affected in the very beginning until we could have some type of their own field at their facility.
Do you know how many games a week?
Currently, at the middle school level, outside of football, football's once a week. Every other sport plays two games a week, either a Monday, Wednesday, or a Tuesday, Thursday. But it very well, we could accommodate the schedule to, outside of football, do a Monday, Wednesday, Friday in order to fit everything into the calendar year and leave extra time for student testing and all that other stuff.
Right. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. Ms. Shelley?
Thank you. I've been asking for, about adding field hockey and baseball for a number of years, so I'm glad to see that it's coming back again. We've had issues before, and I know a lot of it is the fields. So, as Ms. Phelps mentioned, we've got softball fields. The expense to make them into baseball fields, would that be something, Mr. Hockaday, that if we were going to go to the expense, that expense, is that something that would have to be put into, say, a CIP that we'd have to put in there for future years or with that? And then, I'm just looking at, at the fiscal restraints, because I think if it's great for kids, that's huge. But, I mean, we always have fiscal restraint, so I'm looking at that. So, the fields, I'll just start with that.
There's only really one middle school that we would have to construct a, a separate field, that there's not one there now. All the other middle schools actually have spaces that are multipurpose fields. They're designed as softball fields. They're used by schools and Parks and Rec, that we could take one of those and, that's already there, and turn it into the actual softball field to play games, I mean, baseball field to play games on. I don't think that that, the cost of that is going to, something that's going to be required that we have to maybe put into CIP. Putting one in from scratch is a little different story, but as I said, I think there's a lot of different options and things there that we can use now or upgrade facilities that we already have to, to facilitate the games.
Okay, thank you. Then, I'm going on now with, you mentioned no trainers. That scares me because with field hockey, my daughter played field hockey from seventh grade all the way through high school and then actually in college. It would be awesome to have it in our middle schools because she actually, we don't have it in our Parks and Rec either, so she had to play with Fredericksburg Parks and Rec because we don't offer it with us. She didn't get to play in middle school because we didn't have it, but she got to play at Riverbend. But, the training piece, with having trainers, there are so many girls with that flying ball and flying sticks, and I'm going to guess too, at the middle school level when they have less experience with sticks, that I know girls on her team that could never play again because of the number of concussions they, they received playing field hockey, which looks like a benign sport. It's not. And I don't know, I know baseball, we have similar things with flying balls, with boys getting hit in the head. So, with that in mind, and then I know with all of our sports, I mean, we've got football, lots of concussions, and we've got, I mean, basketball, everything. We've got to worry about that. Is that something we might be needing to look at in the future as well, is even just having a part-time trainer in our middle schools so that we can be diligent with our kids and their sports, with our, with those sports? Because when you mentioned that, that really struck a nerve. So, is that something that we might be looking at? And I know that's budgetary, so it would be, and you mentioned this would be looking at it for the future budget, but is that something that we might need in our middle schools?
As we have a, and Mr. Thode's also part of various committees that, that I run, but as a concussion management team, we have, we have at the high school level, we have the luxury of having trainers at all, all of our schools, and they are, they are wonderful to work with. They are highly dedicated. So, I would say as we look through this process, regardless of the addition of field hockey and baseball, I think a consideration of a part-time athletic trainer is, is not a bad idea, and that would be something that, to consider as, as we move forward. And that's regardless of sport. And so, that's, yes, I, I would agree with what you, what you've said.
Great, thank you. And then, you mentioned our athletic directors and their time. I know how hard you work. And that adding another sport on, two sports on top of what you're already doing, teaching a full load, and depending, I know some athletic directors are P.E. teachers, others are special ed, some are English, some are social, they're all over the place with what they, what they do, and that can change every year. If somebody no longer wants that position, it could be somebody with a different load. Honestly, you can be honest, how much more work would that put on our A.D.s? Because I know you don't make a big old stipend for what you do.
Honestly, I'm probably the wrong person to ask because I, I do what I signed up for. I enjoy doing it, and as long as it helps our kids, I, it doesn't bother me. That's my honest answer. I can't speak for everybody else.
I appreciate your honest answer. You are an educator, and there you go. That's perfect. So, I, I think, I probably have some more questions, but that's all I wrote down. I appreciate your time, and I thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all you do with our students.
I want to thank you guys for the presentation. I have a few questions. And I appreciate your response in terms of the activity directors or athletic directors, and maybe they need to be activity directors, and, and maybe we need to relook at how they're compensated, because as much as we appreciate your willingness to do that for the love of our children, we care about you too and love you too, and we want to make sure that our activity directors are fairly compensated, not just the ones that are in place now, but the ones that are in the future, to make it attractive for them to, to retract and retain the very best. So, I, I, I think we need to look at how we, or what we expect out of middle school, either athletic or activity directors, and should they be more in line with what we have in the high school? Don't know the answer to that, just food for thought. I also like to offer a course of action that may not have been considered as it pertains to both field hockey and baseball. With the advent of artificial turf fields coming to all the high schools, that's going to allow for more playability on the fields, even on Saturdays. Because the field will be available on Saturdays and probably will not create as, the scheduling conflicts with the high school, there's an opportunity for these young people that were accustomed to travel, baseball anyway, to participate on a Saturday and have access to fields, which is going to be less expensive because there is a co-opting of the field. So, that's on the field hockey side. On the baseball side, I'm also a baseball umpire, and I go out quite frequently on Saturdays, and the kids play double headers on the sixty-ninety fields. And there's an opportunity because there will not be the competition for the field on Saturday, because a lot of travel teams actually use our high school fields on Saturday, where we could earmark them for middle school to use those fields or, now, the, the problem is we got five high schools, seven middle schools, so what do we do for the other two? I don't know the answer to that, but that's something that I think we could add into the mix as a possible or plausible course of action to weigh, to see if there's a way to implement expanding middle school scores, sports either next year or the year after. So, I said a whole mouthful, and I'd just like to hear, you know, just your initial responses or reactions to some of the statements that I made, because I really didn't ask any questions. So, go, please.
Well, no, well, first and foremost, I would say thank you for at least suggestions of, of the attempt to try and make, have us get through this, you know, in, in a way that's benefiting our kids across the board. I honestly would love to see the fields at, at our school sites. And listening to, to what Mr. Hockaday had said is that the potential at six out of the seven middle schools is that they, they could potentially make that happen rather, I don't want to say easily, but for an operative term, I'll just say easily. And then, just one of our middle schools having to essentially build it. So, I, I would love to have that there. I do look at, when there are Saturday events, that our teachers and our coaches have most often families of their own, that I would rather they go and have that opportunity to be a mom or dad and watch, watch their own child play some baseball or field hockey at that point. So, or whatever, whatever they're involved in. So, I don't know that I necessarily like that as the best idea, but I, I like it as an idea to at least consider. So, as we consider moving this forward and continuing our discussions, I think with the board's support through the budgetary process, being more clear, because the figures that I gave you did not put into anything that could potentially be CIP. It doesn't sound like it would be, except for the one field. And, and then what a potential schedule looks like cooperating with the high schools, because I know with the, with the turf coming in, I have a feeling it's going to be competitive space year-round. So, but it doesn't say that it, that it can't happen, it's just a matter of scheduling and what that looks like, and giving everybody their time and their due. So, I know that what I, what I love best is Henry's answer to begin with, or Mr. Thode's answer, and a fine product of Chancellor High School, by the way. So, but in, in the, in the same respect, coming up with a, a different schedule about what things look like that are non-traditional to what they, what they've been. Let's get rid of the, sort of the sacred cows, so to speak, and let's go ahead and provide an opportunity for our kids and what this looks like. And, and we, we have been talking about this for a while. And, but now we have some hard, fast numbers to do it. I say that through the budgetary process, we look at the space and what that cost might be to, to get these fields done for our kids and provide them the space and the opportunity to do it.
Mr. Wolf, thank you, and thank you for bringing up the consideration of, of Saturday and the impact that would have negatively on our employees. I, I, I really appreciate that, and I think part of the process is developing viable course of action and actually war-gaming them.
Agreed.
Knowing what the advantages are and the disadvantages, and then, you know, we're going to have to apply a price tag to it. But I think the, the rate of return, the yield and return that we're going to get by doing some form of expansion is going to be extremely beneficial to Spotsavanny County schools and our, our, our students. I think, and I, I don't want to speak for the, the whole board, but from everything that I heard, I think the preponderance of us, I think almost all of us, are in favor of some form of expansion, using field hockey and baseball as the, the next plausible steps. Now, if I'm, I know all the board members that are here can hear me. If I'm saying something that's wrong, please chime in and say you're crazy or you're wrong. Okay, I didn't hear any crazies or wrong. I didn't hear any crazies or wrong. So, I, I think we're all in agreement that we, if we did a, an expansion, those would be the sports that we would be most interested in seeing come our way. So, the question is, is, does it take one year or two years? If it takes one year, what are the costs for resources that we're going to need? If it takes two years, what does that mean for us? And what are the scheduling issues that we need to consider with artificial turf fields and without, you know? So, that, that's where we're, I think where we're at, and if you would like to add in.
Well, anecdotally, what I would say, if, if we stair-step it over two years, just my thought is that you incorporate girls' field hockey first, because with football, and you have a number of, of, of boys who play football and sort of outnumber from the girls, so to just from an equity standpoint, is that you would incorporate the girls' sport first, and then you would incorporate baseball on the backside of that. That's if you stair-stepped it. If it, if it went over a two-year sort of phase in implementation, if it went for, if it all could happen in one year, then, then we're good to go. But if it had to go sort of a stair-step, I would incorporate the girls' field hockey first and then baseball.
And, and that's a viable course of action to weigh, should we implement them at the same time, or should we incrementally, and, you know, implement them? You know, what's the advantage or disadvantage either way? We, we don't really know the answer to that right now, but I, I do know we know enough to know that we want to move forward, so we need to develop viable courses of action so that we can vet with the public and, and this board, so we can figure out how to best implement middle school sport expansion.
Mr. Braswell, just to add one thing, on the facility side of it, whether the recommendation is to move both sports at the same time or one or the other, I think we, the facilities can be prepared. We'll do whatever we need to do as long as the funding's there to make sure that that happens. And this is not a facilities answer, but speaking of Saturdays, I think that, I think to reach the, the students that we want to give the opportunities to play sports, and again, we're, you're giving them that opportunity because it, in the long run, it helps them be better students. I don't know that they have the opportunity to maybe get where we need them to be on Saturdays. It's been my experience from teaching, from coaching Parks and Rec for ten years, that the, the biggest problem you have to get the, the players you want is to get them there, whether it's a practice or a game. And, and more than not, it's a, it's a problem getting them there than picking them up. So, I think if, if, if we have the ability to have something at that school where students can stay there in a safe environment to practice in the evenings and/or play games, we're going to reach more students that way than maybe have them have to come in on a Saturday. It may be a distance thing, it may be just they don't, families don't have the opportunities to do that. So, I think the more we keep it at the school level during the week, the, the better outcome you're going to have. You're going to be able to have better, more students, reach more of them at a time, and I think the facilities part is just a minor piece of knowing when we want to implement it and make sure the facilities are ready to do so.
Yeah, point well taken. Thank you. Dr. Baker, did you want to jump in?
No.
Ms. Phelps?
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I speak right now? Are you, are you done?
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, so, would it call to, I'd like to make a motion to move forward to direct staff to come back with the presentation with the budgetary items and what it would cost analysis for the middle school baseball and field hockey.
Well, let's, let's, let's carry that over to new business a little later, so hold that, that thought, okay? We'll, we'll hold that until we get to new business.
Okay, so I withdraw my motion to new business.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. If I might, since it technically falls under superintendent's report, I'd like to share some thoughts. And I, and I appreciate you gentlemen sharing all of this information and doing some of the background. Also, to the, to the previous motion that'll, that'll be revisited, I thank you for providing at least a cursory breakdown of costs tonight for us and, and for the board. So, I don't want to be long-winded. People are hoping for a short meeting tonight. But I do want to share that, since I started as superintendent in two thousand and twelve, I probably meet with hundreds of students, and over the course of seven years I've been here, thousands. And I can tell you that a frequent question to me and a frequent request to me from students and parents has been, particularly at the middle school, the two sports that have been brought forward today. So, if it matters at all, I'm in favor of them. I also want to share that a good question for someone tonight or, who's joining the par- party tonight, might say, well, why, why haven't we already done this? Why are we just bringing this forward tonight because the board had requested it? It's not the first time it's been brought forward. There's been a previous presentation, not exactly the same, but similar. One of the reasons was in 2012, 13, when I first began to hear, why don't we have middle school baseball or middle school field hockey? Was the first year that I remember a budget where we reduced, I think about $1.6 million from nothing but instructional services and personnel here at the school board office. And I also recall that we were way behind and had to spend the better part of the last several years, thanks to some heavy lifting by this school board, to get stipends just up to where they were pre-recession. It was also important, I believe, that we, as has been affectionately known as sunsetting, an activity fee that parents were required to pay for their students to participate in high school sports. And some of that was helping to fund middle school sports. So, I want to make sure that as we move forward, that there is some context, that as we consider moving forward, and I am very much in favor, you know, whatever the board decides tonight in terms of next steps, that we continue to remember that the costs associated, which some things seem to cost a lot to folks and others don't seem to cost a lot, and sometimes they cost the exact same thing. It's just kind of a matter of what we want. And so, as we, we begin to consider moving forward with this, I, I want to make sure that we're also not forgetting that there will be folks that will say, let's expand further, not only in the sporting areas, but as was a, a big topic in this past budget, looking at activities such as, as music and art and theater and many other things that we want our students to have an edge in terms of being able to be competitive. And I, I think the involvement part that you mentioned earlier, Mr. Wolf, is so important, that we have to engage our kids, and sometimes these are the best ways to get them engaged in school, is through an activity that they are passionate about. So, I want to make sure, though, that what this board has had to focus on, with not necessarily an abundance of funding at any level, to, to be able to get us to a place where we can have this conversation and consider moving forward because we no longer have to go and get ourselves just back to where we were pre-recession. So, I just don't want that part to be lost on anyone. And I had one other thought. I think as we're considering this, I, I do think there are other folks that have ideas for how this might happen. Some of the best ideas we get are from folks that may not necessarily just be working in it. Certainly, our athletic directors, our coaches, our board, but there also may be students, there may be other community folks that, that have good ideas for how we can not only move forward effectively, but even more quickly in accomplishing this. So, I want to encourage too, as has been mentioned earlier, really maximizing those partnerships, whether it's with Parks and Rec or with many others. I, I think that there is an opportunity to move forward and maybe there are soft cost savings. I think one of the biggest challenges that was brought up, and this is the final thing that I'll share, is, is field space. Well, I think it's a wonderful thing, and I know how excited Mr. Braswell is, and I don't think he's the only one, that we will have over the next few years, fields that can have greater wear and tear on them and be able to, to, you know, have more sports play on them. So, it really expands our ability or capacity to provide opportunities for kids. But I won't, I'm, I'm just going to go back a, a few years when that bond passed in 2014. Some folks were not very supportive of that at the time. So, I think in moving forward, we need to make sure that everyone understands the context. And anything that we invest in, we need to be prepared to sustain, not just invest in it. And then when the next recession comes down the line or something else comes, we start wanting, wondering what we're going to reduce again. So, I'm not trying to rain on the parade or anything, but I want to make sure that those thoughts are shared this evening. But thank you all for that, and thank you, school board, for your interest and leadership in helping to advance these opportunities for students.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Any other closing comments, Mr. Wolf?
No, I look forward, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Phelps.
I have a, a couple of questions now that it just refreshed my memory. The football, when was the middle school football implemented? Was that in 2013, 14?
I'll just answer that. I think that the question is, when was sixth grade football introduced? Even though it wasn't stated that way, but we've always had.
No, we haven't had sixth grade football.
Oh, I'm sorry, but we've always had middle school football.
We've always had middle school football. We've just permitted sixth grade students to participate in middle school athletics with the exception of football. And I want to say that that was three years ago, two or three years ago?
About three years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, so football wasn't expanded, it was, we, we just expanded athletics for sixth graders except for football.
With the exception.
Would the baseball and the field hockey be offered to the sixth graders also? So, would be sixth, seventh, and eighth?
Oh, absolutely.
Which would be seventh and eighth graders?
With the exception of football, I would say that field hockey and, and baseball should definitely include sixth graders. Absolutely.
Okay, I guess that would come back and within some presentation, you would probably provide that, just kind of give a clear picture of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. In fact, I, I would be a hundred percent concurrence with you that those sports would include sixth, seventh, and eighth graders as well. So, thank you, Dr. Baker, thank you for your presentation and closing comments, and we're going to move on to 15.01, Authorization of Signature in the Absence of the Superintendent, Dr. Baker.
Yes, sir. The State Department of Education requires that the school board designate someone to sign official documents in the absence of the superintendent. I'm recommending this evening that the school board authorize LaShawn Gaines, Chief Financial Officer, to continue signing official documents in the absence of the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Do we have a motion?
Make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Shelley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Twig. Any discussion?
Lisa made the second.
Mr. Twig did before she did. I just, yeah, her, and if she did, her voice came through after his, so. But thank you for your, your, your second, ma'am. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing that, we'll call for the vote. It will be roll call, we'll start with Ms. Phelps.
Aye.
Phelps, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Shelley, aye.
And Braswell, aye. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. We're going to move to 15.02, Approval of the 2020 through 2021 Instructional Calendar. Mr. Brown.
Good evening, Dr. Baker, board, Ms. Bowler, thank you very much, and Chairman Braswell. Tonight, we will present for your approval, the 2020, 2021 Proposed Instructional Calendar. Our calendar committee was composed of 37 members. We had two school board members on our committee, and I want to take a second to commend them. They were there every meeting, they gave a lot of really good input, they participated in the entire process. It really meant a lot for the committee to have two very active board members to participate in all the discussion and all the learning. So, I want to make that point real quick. We had three school principals, one from the elementary, one from the middle, and one from the high school level. There were five central office employees representing all different departments. And we also had 12 parents representing all different levels and all five feeder patterns, as well as 15 teachers representing all five levels and, or all three levels and all five feeder patterns. And most of our teachers that were on the committee were also parents, so they wanted to, wanted to make sure that I did mention that as well. A number of topics were brought up this year, especially with our calendar committee. The first topic was Virginia Code 22.17-79.1, which is better known as the King's Dominion Law, which required up until then, schools to begin school after Labor Day. We developed this calendar during the process where the House was proposing changing that, that law. And so, we sort of, as we did our calendar process, we lived and breathed as they moved theirselves through that proposal. At the end of that, at the end, before we were, before we came to a proposed calendar, they did update that, which actually says now that House Bill 162, 1652 amended that and says that schools can start before, before Labor Day, up to 14 days before Labor Day. Any schools that were previously approved under Article III in 2012 can actually start further before Labor Day than 14 days. Part of that bill as well, that I know some questions came up for our calendar committee, was stating that, part of the bill stated that if you do start 14 days ahead, you are required to take off the Friday before Labor Day because, but there is a caveat in that bill that if you are previously approved under Article III of the 2012 Acts of Assembly, that is not a requirement that you have to follow. And so, we do fit into that, and so you'll see the calendar does not have the Friday before Labor Day off. We looked at previous calendar committee countywide data, we dug through input from the committee itself, we looked at the previous two calendars, the current calendar that we just wrapped up this past year, which had the semester ending right before winter break, and then looking at the approved calendar for next year, we looked at both of those, we spent a lot of time thinking about what the strengths and limitations were of those two setups. And then we also wanted to make sure that we built in enough professional learning and teacher workdays into that as well. We had three meetings. I could read that to you. We met in January, the end of January, the end of February, and the end of March. One of those had to be rescheduled and shifted because of, because of weather. This sort of breaks down what was covered during those meetings. We were very systematic. We wanted to make sure that we gave every member of the committee, you know, fair chance and, and fair voice so that we could really talk through and, and determine what needed to be changed and what needed to be held, held consistent. We did propose several key changes that you will notice to the calendar, or you may not notice because it's, it's built very similarly to the calendar that we're living through right now. We did provide additional professional learning days to the calendar at the beginning of the school year, like we have coming up for this, this current school year, where we have two additional contracted days for employees before, before the teacher work week. We are starting, we are proposing to start the 2020, 21 school year on a Wednesday. Part of that was the way the calendar laid out, that was, we, we went, a lot of discussion on that, trying to get that worked out, trying to get the 90 days in before the, before the end of the first semester. We wanted to make sure that we protected professional learning days and did not lose those days to weather, similar to the way that we have our calendar set up this year. We also shifted spring break to the end of the third nine weeks, similar to the way that our upcoming 2019, 2020 calendar is laid out. We also wanted to standardize time so that all levels had an opportunity, elementary, middle, and high, to look at student data and make instructional decisions, especially in that midpoint of the year. We also, too, adjusted the calendar, the conference nights based upon a lot of committee feedback. We looked at adjusting those. Previously, our high schools, our high schools' conference night was on a different night, and so it ended up that our elementary school students and parents were coming, or had a late night on a Tuesday, which then sometimes could impact that student's learning throughout the week. And so, we are proposing to set the high school conference night on Tuesday, middle school conference night on Wednesday, and elementary school conference night on Thursday. No real adjustment to the calendar itself, just adjusting who is going to be doing conference nights on which nights. So, at that point, you all have a copy of the draft 2020, 2021 Instructional Calendar. I can answer any questions, and if you do not have any, we will ask for approval for this proposed instructional calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. We have first question by Mr. Blaine.
We need to make a motion first?
Oh, yes, please, thank you, I'm sorry.
Can make a motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Instructional Calendar.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley, for the motion to approve the 2020, 2021 Instructional Calendar. We have a second?
I will second that.
Second, second by Mr. Blaine. We now open the floor for discussion. Anyone that has any concerns or the questions?
I just want to compliment you very frankly on, on this new, new schedule. It's ideal from my standpoint in terms of finishing before Christmas and then starting again and finishing early. I think it's going to really fill a need that we have and enable us, it seems to me we have a little bit more flexibility based on what you've said than we have in the past, and I think that's outstanding. So, my compliments to you and the staff and our board members who participated.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Changing the conferences, I understand why, but I just know always in the past, we've had middle schools doing Thursday, elementary's Tuesday. Is that going to mess up for, is, let me start over. Is that going to be confusing for the people who are used to what we've done? I mean, I know when you always do it the same, you don't get the results, but...
Right. Well, I think, I think one thing that we're going to have to look at as we do make changes, as we have to the instructional calendar, we're going to really have to make sure that we communicate that clearly with all of our constituents, that all our elementary schools and middle schools and high schools are going to have to make sure that they reach out to their families and let them know that things are changing. The good thing is, is that we've got plenty of time to do that. And, and as we look even into next year, and I know Ms. Balaico will be coming up in just a second, and I'll be staying up here to talk about next year, even then, we really have a lot of time to make sure that we communicate that, that, those changes.
So, do we have an idea that, let's say, recorder night at the elementary schools will still continue to be on Tuesday nights? Are they looking at completely revamping some of those activities as well?
Yeah, I can answer it, but chances are I won't be right.
I think this is one of the things that I'm passionate about with the elementary. Our conference nights are not the only things that fall in that schedule, as you're, as you're saying. A lot of, you know, when Tuesday night was conference night, Tuesday night was performance night, and all of the other reading nights and all the other things we do to engage our families at the elementary level. When you get to middle and high school, it's, every night is something. But in elementary, we were kind of held to Tuesday night. What we hope to do to shift to Thursday is to align things on Thursday. Conferences, especially for elementary as well, really fall all week long because the teachers at the elementary level endeavor to meet with every parent. So, two hours on a conference night isn't enough time, so they try to use the daytime throughout the week and then stay late on, on one evening. We've heard from our elementary principals that they like the idea of a potential change. It also helps us in the future, not on these two calendars that we're talking about this evening, but really thinking about our back-to-school night and how to engage parents in the evening. Traditionally, we've worked on a Friday morning or afternoon and brought families in at the elementary level, but this may give us the opportunity to go ahead and run that evening, back-to-school night. I know that something we learned at LLE, though, is how can we engage our parents differently? So, I see maybe down the road in the future, conferences being led in a different way. But because we have this draft that we've worked on, the 2020, 2021, and then the 1920 that I'm about to chat about, we have them listed on there, and we want to follow through with that. But I think, thinking about how can we transition our community to thinking different and, and our schools to think different, too, about how to engage parents for those very important conferences.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. We have Mr. Twig.
Could you elaborate on the overall takeaway? What have both teachers and parents thought about the schedule this year? Just general observations, not strictly committee, but...
Certainly, yeah, general observations.
Give everybody listening an overview of what that looks like this past year.
We haven't done anything officially, so I can't talk in, you know, about percentages or any of that stuff, but from my point of view, being the facilitator of the Instructional Calendar Committee, when I've done that... Committee, when I've done that for the past two years, three years, I've heard nothing but positives about the news, the way that we've run it this past year. This past year was the first year that we've lived through it, and the Calendar Committee did have a, have a lengthy discussion about when do we step back again and re-sort of poll our, our stakeholders. But, yeah, I, a lot of the, a lot of the concerns about the calendar, if there are any, do come through my extension, and I have not heard any this spring of any concerns over the, you know, over the early out, or the, or the, you know, the, the early beginning, or the semester end at, at Christmas time. Haven't heard anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps. Did you have any questions? Do we have?
I'm a part of the committee. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. I didn't have any additional questions. We'll call, we'll call for the vote. We have a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. We'll start with Ms. Phelps. Your vote, please.
Aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
And Braswell, aye. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Moving on to 15.03, Amendment to the 2019 through 2020 instructional calendar. Ms. Balaico.
Yes. Our instructional calendar has the conference nights listed at the right of the calendar for elementary, middle, and high school. The recommendation proposed to you this evening is that those conference nights on the 1920 calendar are about to be published widely, aligned with that 2021 calendar that you just approved, to make it high school on Tuesday, middle school on Wednesday, and elementary school on Thursday.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I will make the motion to change the conference nights.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to make the recommended changes. Second by Mr. Twig. Any discussion? Ms. Shelley.
Um, Mr. Brown, in your presentation, you said that you had heard parents say about how late it was for our elementary students. So, I wanna say thank you for listening to the parents and listening to our families and taking into consideration what they were saying, so that we can continue to support our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Is there any other comments? Hearing done, we'll call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Ms. Phelps?
Aye.
And the Chair, Braswell, aye. The motion carries five zero. Thank you. We'll move on to 15.04, first reading approval of VSPA policy updates for February 2019. Administration's recommendation that the School Board approve the first readings, the proposed actions for each of the revised policies and regulations as outlined by the VSPA, February 2019 policy updates, reviews, index manual, and policy review checklist as presented. We have a motion on the floor.
I will so move.
Move by Mr. Blaine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call for the vote. Again, it'll be by rule call. Uh, Mr. Blaine?
Aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Ms. Phelps?
Phelps, aye.
And the Chair, aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. We'll move on to 15.05, second reading approval of revisions to School Board Policy JFC, Code of Conduct. Mr. Lynn.
Mr. Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker, and Ms. Bowler. Each year, staff reviews Policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct, and as appropriate, other discipline-related policies and regulations in order to ensure compliance with changes in legislation and to consider other revisions that may be necessary or appropriate. The proposed revisions have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel. Administration's recommendation is that the School Board approves for second reading the proposed revisions to School Board Policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to approve Code JFC, Student Code of Conduct, JFC.
Motion by Ms. Shelley to approve School Board Policy JFC Code of Student Conduct. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a discussion.
Let's let Ms. Phelps go first, please.
Um, it was just a clerical, I think it was more or less a clerical on my docs that I have here. It says the attachment JFC dot number two ST reading. I think it should say second. Maybe it did say first and should say ND, maybe, or, I don't know, it was just a clarification on that. That's it, just a clerical.
Well, I, I think you, are you referring to the, that click-on tab? Ms. Phelps? I think it's, okay.
Yeah, just the attachment, um, the name of the attachment is JFC dot two ST, and this is the second reading, so I just would like to clarify that it's second and not first.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's second, and I think it's a typo. So, it's, we'll correct that for the record. Any other questions or concerns?
I have just a couple.
Mr. Blaine, please.
Item, item C, the tobacco education course. Thought I had the number here. This is just a generic question. Could you, how important is that, or how often, what kind of a problem is this for our students? Is it a major issue, or is it just incidental?
The entry on tobacco, which is, is C-30, we, we saw our violations skyrocket this year, and the, the, almost the main sole contributor to those numbers going up were the electronic cigarettes vaping and, and that type of thing. So, we, we felt a critical need in providing more education to our students to, to get, get that word out there and serve our students through educating them as to what role vaping and electronic devices play in this whole tobacco topic.
Good. Oh, that's, that's very helpful. The other one, one I would like to ask you to just elaborate on is the one that deals referral to counseling services for bias-based bullying, intimidation, and harassment. What, could you just elaborate on that a little bit? What exactly, what's our experience and what are we trying to solve? A little elaboration.
This is a, a topic that the Mental Health Advisory Committee had recommended several years ago, that when we were faced with bullying incidents that were specifically related, or seemed to be related to biases, that mental health support was appropriate and should be included in our Code of Student Conduct. So, this, this was something we, that the, we got a strong recommendation from our school Mental Health Advisory Committee made up of our school counselors, school social workers, and school psychiatrists. So, we included that at, at that time to, to add additional support for those students who violated the, the bullying prohibition, but for a very specific identifiable reason related to biases.
Are you the one that ultimately put this idea together?
I, I can't claim credit for it. I, I took good notes, Mr. Blaine, and then took that to the Code of Conduct Committee several years ago, but, but actually, it was our supervisor of school counselors, Mr. Tom Mitchell, that, that chaired that Mental Health Advisory Committee that brought that forward to me.
Oh, good. That's very helpful. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any other comments by, by board members? Any other questions or concerns? We'll call for the vote. Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Ms. Phelps?
Phelps, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
And the Chair votes aye, and the motion carries five zero. Thank you very much. We'll move on to 15, 15.06, Award of Contract for Invitation to Bid, is 05012019-1400, Physical Education Uniforms. Ms. Carter?
Yes, good evening, Chairman, School Board Members, Dr. Baker, and Ms. Bowler. Tonight, I am presenting the contract recommendation for physical education uniforms. The procurement department issued an invitation for bid on April 1st, 2019, for the purchase of as-needed physical education student uniforms for use in the school divisions, middle, and high schools. The IFB was advertised on the procurement website, Eva, the Virginia State Procurement website, and was issued directly to two vendors. Eleven vendors responded to the bid due on May 1st, 2019, by 2:00 PM. The bid from Athletic Union LLC conforms to all specifications set forth in the IFB and has submitted the lowest price. Therefore, it's administration's recommendation to award the contract to Athletic Union LLC for physical education uniforms, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the floor?
Motion accept.
Um, motion by Mr. Twig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? Well, go ahead.
Um, because it's, there's not an estimated cost yet, is that because we'll get them, but then the students will, will be purchasing them back from the school?
Um, there's actually a, a cost per uniform, or, I'm sorry, let me see. Um, I guess I could get you a more detailed bid tab, per se, but the cost would be at the school level, and I guess that would depend on participation at each middle and high school.
Okay. And, and do you know, because this is school athletic funds, that are activities funds, this is, so if it costs $10, then the kids are paying $10 back for it, or maybe another dollar? But, um, that's kinda what I was wondering. The schools will be getting their money, getting the money back from whatever they purchased the, the uniforms.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there any other questions? I have a question, Ms. Carter.
Okay.
Did you have one, Mr. Twig? Okay. I had a question. My, my question is, I saw the screening criteria, and I know cost was weighed extremely, what was a primary determinant.
Yes, sir.
Uh, my question is, is, did we ever consider having a control group of students try on the uniforms and determine if they actually liked them?
Uh, well, I did ask the opinion of Molly Miller, I think she's the head athletic director, and she did give specifications on what she wanted the uniform to consist of, but yeah, I think that would be a great idea in the future.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other questions? We'll call for the vote. Uh, let's start with Ms. Phelps.
Phelps, aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Award, 15.07, Award of the Use of Cooperative Agreement with Vanguard for the Modular Classroom Project. Ms. Carter and Mr. Hockaday.
Okay, the next item is, we are asking for authorization to utilize the cooperative contract with Vanguard Modular for the purchase of N units and the relocation of current modular units. The use of this same cooperative procurement contract was originally authorized by the School Board on April 8th, 2019, for the mobilization of one modular unit from Cortland High School to Spotsylvania Middle School. Therefore, staff recommends that the School Board authorizes administration to utilize the same cooperative contract with Vanguard Modular Building Systems for the purchase of the N units and the relocation of the additional modular classrooms project as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Is there a motion on the floor?
So, move.
Moved by Mr. Blaine. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion?
I have another question.
Say again. Go ahead, please.
Could you explain N unit, please?
I'm gonna let Sean explain that.
Yes, ma'am. Um, the current units are consisted of several units put together, and we're actually dividing a 10-classroom unit. In order to do that, we needed two more N pieces to make up the additional space we're trying to provide. So, we're, we're trying to use what we already have and only purchase two pieces versus buying a whole new set of modulars, so we just needed two N pieces.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Phelps, did you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Uh, any other questions on the board? We'll call for the vote. We'll start with Mr. Twig.
Twig, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Ms. Phelps?
Phelps, aye.
Mr. Ms. Blaine, and the Chair, aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to 15.08, Approval of Resolution for Virginia Public School Authority Technology Expenditure Reimbursements. Mr. Zakari.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Baker, and Ms. Bowler. Each year, the Virginia Public School Authority conducts the sale of bond notes to fund the purchase of technology equipment. The proceeds from these notes provide the next installment of the funds in the Educational Technology Grant Program, which provides financial support for the school's divisions to develop and implement the standards of learning's web-based technology initiative. The notes are also include the School Security Equipment Grant Program, as well as the Virginia E-Learning Backpack Initiative, and was reauthorized by the 2019 General Assembly. The goal of the Educational Technology Grant Program is to improve the instructional, remedial, and testing capabilities of the SOL in local school divisions, and to increase the number of schools achieving full accreditation. School divisions are required to use the funds first to develop and maintain the capability to support the administration of online SOL testing for all students, with the exception of students with documented need for a paper SOL test. Funding for the program was reauthorized by the 2019 General Assembly. It's administration's recommendation that the School Board approves the VPSA resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Zakari. Is there a motion?
I will make that motion.
Moved by Ms. Shelley. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Mr. Blaine. Any discussion?
Good.
Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll call for the vote. Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
Ms. Phelps?
Phelps, aye.
Mr. Twig?
Twig, aye.
Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
And the Chair, aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're moving on to 16.01, and Ms. Phelps, I, I'm gonna ask you to prepare yourself to give that motion. I had mentioned to you, it was new business, it was actually unfinished business, because we already had the middle school sports issue on the plate. So, if you'd like to, you can go ahead and offer your motion at, for the unfinished business portion.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to move forward, to direct the staff to continue the research and the actuaries to be brought back to the board for the middle school baseball and field hockey.
Okay, so we have a motion for staff to continue providing, um, feedback on the courses of action for the board to consider for field hockey and baseball for middle school expansion. Ms. Phelps, I'd like to ask you, would you like to put a time period, or a time period for staff to, to get back to, to the entire board?
Well, um, so, I think this discussion was brought up in October, so, um, October would be, I think, a feasible timeframe, for just my thought process.
October? Yes.
That's a suggestion.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so that's, do we have a second?
I will second that. I like October date.
Second, okay. Uh, Dr. Baker, is October, that's your thumbs up? Good, okay. So, we have a motion by Ms. Phelps to have staff provide us some additional course of, I mean, well, to weigh the courses of action and give us a presentation at the October School Board meeting, uh, in terms of middle school sport expansion as it pertains to baseball and field hockey. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I do. Oops, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Blaine?
Essentially, we're asking for a proposal, it seems to me, to do precisely what they're talking about. So, I think the motion really should say, propose, prepare a proposal for the October meeting to initiate the programs. the October meeting to initiate the programs.
So, prepare a, a proposal. So, let's, let's go back to Ms. Phelps first. Ms. Phelps, the, Mr. Blaine brought up the issue of preparing a proposal. Would you like to amend your...
To amend it to preparing a proposal, however, I brought the motion forward due to the School Board policy that was implemented a couple months back regarding directing staff to have a vote of the majority of the School Board members to vote on directing staff to provide us with any information or documentation that we need. So, that's why I brought it.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And...
If we're going to go ahead with bringing back the proposal, that's, that's fine with me.
Okay. So, we have a, and, and the second, Ms. Shelley, Ms. Shelley is fine with seconding that. So, it's properly moved and seconded. Now, we'll call for any discussion.
I'm wondering if that proposal would include field space and where we would, for instance, if football and field hockey are at the same time, who gets the field and when?
I, I believe that's implied in that.
That's implied. Okay. Making sure. I...
What I'm, what I would be working with staff on, it sounds like there might be a range of proposals rather than one proposal. And I think a key piece of, if it's going to be October, then we would then be looking for the board to provide direction following that presentation of a range of proposals as to whether to move forward in incorporating it into the FY '21 budget.
Absolutely.
And, and Mr. Braswell, to caveat, that is exactly why I think October is a good day, is a good time, because we would be kind of starting our pre-work, October, November, for budget season.
For the next budget season.
So, I think that's, that's perfect.
Thank you. Any other points of discussion? Okay, here...
That was my thought process for the October meeting, to give enough time to staff, but also to have the, within the proper budget, budgetary timeline coming up, because I know it gets crazy.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Phelps. I know. It's a point well taken. We'll call for the vote. We'll start with Ms. Phelps, since it's your motion, please. Ms. Phelps? Could you hear? Oh, aye, okay. Mr. Blaine?
Blaine, aye.
Mr. Twigg?
Twigg, aye.
Ms. Shelley?
Shelley, aye.
And Braswell, aye. Motion carries five zero. Do we have any other unfinished business? Any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move to 16.02. Any new business? Any new business? Hearing none. We'll move on to 17.01, and we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Ms. Phelps gives us a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Thanks, Lisa.
A second by Mr. Blaine by saying thanks to the, to Lisa, and we'll just adjourn by unanimous consent.